Welcome. This is the May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Berlin zoning board of appeals. It is being held via Zoom webinar. Panelists and attendees, please note that your image, voice, or and telephone number may be recorded for the record. Let me introduce the board. Please raise your hand when I call your name. Jim Royer.
Yep.
Pat Jackson.
I did it. Yo.
Keith Suzie.
Yeah.
I'm Lynn Ryan, and Lee Anne Leahy, our administrative assistant, is with us this evening. Did I miss anyone?
Nope.
I don't think so. Okay, let's see. First on the agenda, we have a hearing. I'll open the hearing for one thirty-six Central Street for a home-based contracting business special permit and site plan.
There comes Susanna. And Lynn, I did want to let the board know that I did receive the newspaper clippings and the butter notifications, and everything was met by the deadline.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just get Susanna squared away. Okay, and do you want me to promote the petitioner?
Please do so. Susanna Roberts, would you just raise your hand?
Right here.
Thank you.
Before we open this hearing, can we just discuss whether I am a butter or not for this hearing?
I would take it this way, Susanna, and I've just opened the hearing, but anyway, we go by what the assessors list. There's all different ways, you know, it can be within five hundred feet, it can be a butter, it can be a butter to a butter. Each one tends to be different. So if you are not on the list of a butters based on the assessors, I would say you have reason to participate.
Okay.
Okay, I can allow the petitioner to speak.
Yes.
For whatever reason they're declining to become on the panel, a part of the panel. So let me allow to talk.
Hey.
And you're muted.
Oh, no, he's fine now. Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi there. Well, thank you for having the meeting for us. I missed the, I'm sorry, I missed the part that you said, what do you need me to, what do you need from us? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
You need to present your case. You're asking for a special permit and site plan.
Yes.
We need, we need to know the details, you know, what kind of a home-based contracting business, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, awesome. Okay, I would like to put up a barn of forty by eighty at one thirty-six Central Street, and primarily seventy-five percent of the space in that barn will be for farm equipment and apple storage. A twenty by thirty will be an apple cooler, twenty feet by thirty feet with a little space for packing apples. Two tiers, two bays will be for tractors and sprayers. And then there'll be one portion, twenty-five percent of that building will be for commercial lawn mowers, weed whackers, chipper, and other small pieces of equipment that we use for landscaping. We have a little landscape business that we run together with the farm. And this, the whole building is, it's a necessary addition or an importance for all of the equipment that I have. The old house that's there, one thirty-six, pardon me, has to come down. I'm just waiting to get an asbestos survey before we take it down to remove any asbestos that might be in the house. We have the green light from the historical society. And ideally, I would love to put the barn up before we tear the house down, so I could take all my tools out of it and all my boxes and bags for the farm, for the store, and put them in the building. And then we will fill in the hole for the cellar and landscape around it and just tidy up around the place. But the building primarily will be for cold storage, tractors and sprayers, and lawn mowing, equipment, lawn mowers.
Have you read through the bylaw?
Briefly.
You have it there.
Yeah.
So do you feel you meet all of the requirements outlined in the bylaw for site plan and for special permit?
Um, yes, I believe, I believe I do, because most of the equipment is used on the farm, and some of it is used landscaping. For example, the trucks are used for landscaping and for farm, farm purpose. All of the trucks have a commercial plate. It's a lot easier to use a commercial truck for, to do farm work than to use a farm vehicle for commercial work, especially if you get stopped by DOT. So, yes, I do, I do believe, talking with Richard, that I do meet all of the the necessary requirements outlined in the bylaws.
And the number of trucks, the number of employees, that sort of thing, have you looked at that?
Yes. So I have one truck that, it's a commercial truck, but I use it personally, then we have three other trucks. I know the truck says that are, there's none of them over the GVW limit, but it seems to be that we have, the number of trucks might be over the bylaw, but the trucks are used for the farm work as well as opposed to the landscaping. They're not just used solely for landscaping.
So you're willing to designate which vehicle is for landscaping and which vehicle, vehicles will not be used in the landscaping, is that correct?
I'd say there's only, there's, all of the vehicles are used in the landscaping, there's probably one truck that doesn't get used in the farm, in the farm end of the business. It's just a smaller truck.
But do you see a potential issue with that?
That there's too many trucks?
Right.
Ms. Ryan, this is Sheila Byrne, and I'm just joining in. Last night in talking with the planning board, they were looking at the square footage of the lot that our house and the Burton Eva's house is a three-acre lot. And considering that square footage with the amount of trucks, but the, would be perhaps with the trailers and whatnot, you could see where that could be a conflict. But what they were saying and what we would argue is that because our, our personal lot of the three acres abuts the eighty-eight acres of orchard, that if you consider the whole parcel as one, because the two are kind of, the way they coexist in a, in a unique way, that that way, that would make it for a unique special permit here, because not everything happens on that one three acres, that we have the orchard and the woodland that, that connects to that. So, ye- yes, we are asking for that, but with those three trucks and the two trailers, is that correct, Jared?
Yeah, just two trailers.
Yeah, and those trailers do not do farm work, but the other trucks, as Jared was saying, was saying, does, they do transport apples, they do transport.
Fertilizer.
Yeah, fertilizer for the farm, also for the landscaping, so they are dual-purpose. And that's why you would see that one truck has the two names of the businesses on there. But the van and the white F-150 is, those are personal.
On the plot plan, do you have screening? Do you have your septic and well-listed?
Uh, yes, so, well, what did you mean by screening, ma'am?
The, the.
The buffering between you and your neighbors.
Uh, yes, so I think we put it in the site plan that we submitted.
Yeah, it's not very good, but the, the idea would be like arbiviti bushes in between us and the neighbors on the other side.
At the rear of the building.
But there's still quite a lot of foliage and trees there anyhow as well, but we didn't, we didn't do anything very fancy.
We have not done anything yet.
Well, you don't have to do anything fancy, but you would have to indicate where there is a buffer, and if it would be a natural buffer, or you're going to plant arbivites, or whatever you're going to do on the plot plan.
Um, okay, so there's a hundred and thirty feet from the rear of the building to the lot line. We did not, other than indicate, I think we indicated we would plant a row of arbivites at the rear of the lot.
What did she say?
I don't see it. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be looking at, but I don't see anything there.
It was, I, it was just drawn in, and it cannot, I didn't do a very good job. You know, the, on the.
It's not on the plan from.
Ross Associates. It's the other one, well, maybe I.
Don't have another one.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have another one either.
It's, it's, you don't have the one with the, the stripes over, over our, our two neighbors, and then JT just bland and one twenty-seven.
Is that a little, just a stripe on a map?
Yes.
Can't see a thing on it, sorry.
Okay, yeah, that's, it, it's not, not much. I, I don't know why.
Oh, yeah, so you, row of arbivites.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry about that. So I, it must not have come, and I apologize. I have on the map from David Ross Associates, I, I wrote on the back line of the, of the two hundred and sixty-six feet there with, it says NF Hogan's House.
Sorry.
I, yeah, I, it's, I put row of arbivites or evergreens.
I just jumped through.
It, I can read it, I can read the first letter with the R.
Yeah.
So I can see, you must have written it in pencil?
Yes, I did. Stupid. And then in, in inside the barn, I just put apple storage. Can you see equipment, farm equipment? Farm equipment, no, okay. I'm sorry about that.
I mean, I can, I can see handwriting, but I can't, it's hard to make it out.
What kind of materials would you be storing, and where would you be storing them? I'm thinking in terms of chemicals that you may use for your landscaping.
Uh, no, so there would be no chemicals in that building. All, all we thought we were storing in there is just equipment. We might be storing some of the U-PIC bags for the apple picking, the plastic bags or cardboard boxes that we pack apples into. There will be no chemicals in that building.
Well, what about chemicals on the property?
So, okay, we have a little, a chemical building, just a spray shed up in the orchard. It's outside of the wall, it's outside of that lot, that plant that, that we have. It's just up in the orchard.
Okay, so it's not on the lot that you're asking?
No.
The contract?
Correct.
So you understand that, you know, if we were to act on this, we're not approving the storage of anything?
I, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Ms. Ryan, you mentioned a well or a, an septic. And I, there is, we are not putting a toilet or anything in this, so there is no well or septic involved.
How do you get to it?
We need, we need to know where on the lot they are.
Oh, that is shown on the, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that is shown on the Ross plan.
Okay.
It's up by the house, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
What is, what is missing is the height of the building.
Right, there's no well.
The well is, it's under.
Oh, I see, the letter. Then underneath three point five acres, is that right there?
Yep.
Okay, and how would you actually get to the barn? Is there driveways or anything? Are you coming off the street?
Yes, ma'am, with the, the existing, the driveway that's there now, Burton Eva's original driveway.
So that driveway has all your equipment on it now anyway, and kind of like a white shed or something, right by there?
Yep, there's a shed there, but yes, everything is set back behind, behind the house. Sometimes they'll, they'll park a truck there, but yes.
Yeah, because I see the truck. So this is, that's where you're going to access it?
Yes.
Yes, same driveway, yes.
So that kind of needs to be on there too, I would think.
Well, the current, there, there seems to be like a tent kind of building back there. Will that be staying, or will that be coming down after the new one is built?
Uh, that's coming down.
Okay, and then what is the height of your proposed steel building?
Uh, it's a fourteen-foot sidewall.
And just a regular seven-pitch roof or three-pitch roof?
Yeah, you know, I'm looking for the information on that, but it's not in that.
Okay, so there's no, there's no upper loft storage space then?
No.
No, there is not.
And you have screening on the far side, which I guess is maybe over by you sewer somewhere, and, but there's no screening towards the road or anything?
Uh, the, oh, no, the, all the screening is towards the road right now is the few plants that's in front of the house. And, you know, so once they will be removed when the house comes down, so then we can put some screening in there on the same, on the street side.
We'd also need that on the site plan, the screening, the height of the screening, whatever you're going to do on that side as well.
Okay.
So all of your trucks, et cetera, will be stored inside. There is only one truck that is going to be for the exclusive use of the contracting business, right?
Uh, yes.
The other trucks, it would be incidental use, would you call it?
Um, yes.
They're not labeled landscaping though, are they, Jerry?
Uh, one of them is, two of them are labeled farm and landscaping. One is labeled landscaping.
Two, two have both, and one has, so basically all three have landscaping on it?
Uh, yes, and two of them have farm on it, I believe, yes.
Yeah, that.
That, that is an issue in that we have held steady to the number of vehicles that can be used. Again, this is an exception for a residential agricultural area. This is not a commercial area. So when we're giving or granting permits for home-based contracting businesses, this is meant for the small contractor. Could you tell me how many employees you have?
I have two, two full-time and one part-time.
And how many are you allowed?
Um, I believe I'm allowed two.
Okay. So two in addition to yourself, and then one part-time?
Yes.
So you wouldn't mind if we made it just two full-time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we agreed that there's no external um, storage, external or internal uh, storage of any kind of chemicals, correct?
Correct.
What about other materials? Would you have?
Wood, bricks.
Yeah, gravel, dirt piles.
Okay, so, yeah, we bring in a little mulch in the springtime, and, you know, a lot of topsoil as we needed. Um, and that mostly in April and May, and then usually by the end of May, we're done spreading mulch. And we're, we're done spreading any topsoil or lawn repair. After that is primarily maintenance, cutting. And, you know, we don't store gravel on site, or we just get it at Berlin Stone as we need it.
But the others, yeah, sorry.
You do store some topsoil, and you do store some mulch on the property?
Yes, I'd limit, yes, I mean, we don't store, we, we have it here so that we don't have to go pick it up, but yes, I mean, it's delivered here. But we don't have it in the wintertime or anything like that. We don't store anything like that throughout the winter.
Well, there is, there is some question about how much soil do you import, and where do you import it from?
Um, I would buy a load of topsoil off Mike Sawyer whenever I need it, eighteen yards at a time. I haven't bought any off him yet this year. I have a little.
So if you're, you're talking eighteen square yards?
Yes.
So what would be the maximum at any one given time you would have on the property?
Eighteen.
So you'd have eighteen square yards of mulch? Or in tops, or in topsoil?
Or and topsoil.
So eighteen of each?
Yes, actually, I think the, the mulch is delivered at twenty yards at a time, and topsoil is eighteen.
Okay, so if you are restricted to no more than twenty square yards of mulch on the property at any given point in time, and eighteen square yards of topsoil, you would not find that detrimental?
Um, no.
Lynn, if I may, those are actually cubic yards, not square yards.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Makes a big difference in the long run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you had any discussion with the Conservation Commission or and the Board of Health?
No.
Because we do require that you bring a letter from the Board of Health and from Conservation. Chances are they're not involved at all. I don't know. But we just need a letter from them saying that, that, you know, it's not within their jurisdiction or for Conservation, or in the case of the Board of Health, that they have no issue with it.
Okay.
Did they, did they not receive a copy, one of the packets of this application, Ms. Ryan?
They did, they did, but they still need you to request the letter. I think it says right in the bylaw that, you know, you have to, the Building Inspector, the Board of Health, and the Conservation Commission.
Yep.
You have the Building Inspector, but you need a letter from the Board of Health, and you need a letter from the Conservation Commission. And again, the letter will probably be that, you know, you have, you're not anywhere near a wetland, and they have no jurisdiction as far as the Conservation is concerned. And the second one would be that it doesn't affect the Board of Health in, as far as water and sewer goes, but we just need them to sign off on it before we can sign off on it.
Okay.
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 You also, you're not going to have any lighting out there, are you, Jerry?
Um, no, not really. No.
Any signage?
No.
So you're not going to have any sign announcing your business, and you're not going to have any lighting as it pertains to the.
I mean, there'll be lighting in the building, but there would be no outdoor lighting.
Right.
Yes.
And the reason that Pat's asking that is because you'd need to get that on the site plan and have us approve it, and then you would have no problem with it, if that's what you were choosing to do. Okay, folks, where do we stand?
I think the only thing you still have to rectify is the the names on the trucks. If he's only going to put one there, that's one thing, but you still got landscaping unless.
Well, I think he has to identify the truck, at least.
Okay.
Uh, and I would strongly suggest that only one of the trucks would have his business name on it if it was the primary use was for the business. And if the other two trucks that he has, the primary use is for the farm, and the, it's only incidental use, I mean, we can write that into a permit, but we need to be able to identify which truck and its weight. Because there's a certain weight that you're allowed, and I think you would probably fall in the highest category for the square footage, but uh, what is it, ninety-two? I was going to look and see what the chart says. There's a chart in here that tells you how many employees you can have. And yeah, table of home-based contracting business. Uh, on the in the zoning bylaw that I have, it's on page forty-three, it's five forty-one table. Um, and it says how many square feet you have, what, like three and a half acres or something?
Yeah, it's three and a half on the plot plan.
So is that more than or less than a hundred and sixty thousand square feet?
Could be less than.
Less, yeah.
Okay, so if he's less than, it eighty thousand square feet
Mm-hmm.
to a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, you have one registered vehicle, less than twenty-six thousand pounds gross weight as registered with the Registry of Motor Vehicles, plus one trailer, less than twelve thousand pounds gross weight as registered with the Registry of Motor Vehicles. And the number of employees would be two. Does the petitioner see that?
Yes, we're, we're looking at the same chart, yes.
So you would fall in that middle category, do you believe that?
Only if you only consider the three acres that we're sitting on. If you're, if you consider the fact that we have eighty acres of orchard attached to us, then I would disagree in that we are in the greater than one hundred and sixty thousand uh, square feet, and that we could have the two registered vehicles if, because that, those vehicles do both work.
You're home-based though, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, the property that we are looking at as far as the site plan goes is approximately three and a half acres.
Yes, not the other.
It's not the other. And if we get into the other, then we're going to get into the stuff that you're telling me that you put in the back there.
Um, what do you mean, what we put in the back there?
The chemical storage.
Oh, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, that's on the, the farm itself, yes. That's a different, yeah.
Well, it wouldn't, I mean, you know, we can't do it both ways.
Yep.
And there would be nothing to prevent you from selling that back land.
Well, yes, ma'am, well, I, I suppose, but there's the restriction on the land, so we can't, we can't sell it like somebody else killed it anyhow.
Yeah, but they don't.
You, you mean, it, it is sixty-one? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Right, well, that doesn't mean you can't sell it, because someone could buy it, and then they could pay, pay the back taxes and use it for development if they chose. I mean, there's ways around that.
There, I, I don't mean to disagree with you, ma'am, but those, that, that is so locktight, there is absolutely nothing. Mr. Coddington's restriction is so tight, we barely got the farm store up fourteen years ago. It's, it's, you know. fourteen years ago. It's, it's, you know, but anyhow.
Is this a Coddington restriction?
Yes.
Yeah, but that doesn't prevent you from selling it because Mr. Coddings property was over four hundred acres and I own a part and Pat owns a part and you own a part. And the neighbor, our other neighbors own a part, and so it can be subdivided. What the, what the restriction does is it just doesn't allow you to build on it. So you can divide it up how many ever men- however many times you want, you just can't build on it and it must remain in agriculture. So it doesn't prevent you from selling it, but it does prevent you from building on it.
Right, and the site plan is just for this three and a half acres, because it is restricted to those three and a half acres. It doesn't apply to your agricultural area.
Yeah, I understand that. But, uh, all the employees work in the orchard. All of the equipment is used landscaping and in the orchard. If we didn't have the orchard, we wouldn't have as many landscape trucks or employees. And the only reason they're landscape trucks is because it's a lot easier to do all farm work and landscape work on commercial trucks as opposed to do farming on commercial vehicles, but anyhow.
Well, Mr. Bernie, we're trying to work with you, and I think what we're trying to do is to fit you into this bylaw. And in order, in order to do so, um, adherence to the bylaw requires only two employees. It requires, um, only one vehicle. And there's a wa- weight restriction on that particular truck. You can also have a trailer. And we're saying, yes, if you tell us that the other vehicles are for agricultural use and only incidental to your, um, business. Then, I think we could fit you in.
Sure, okay.
And the mulch and the topsoil, generally speaking, we don't allow that. Um, I'm thinking, and it would, again, be up to my colleagues as far as there being, um, the cubic feet, eighteen cubic feet is not a lot. But if we were to limit it, perhaps we could say that's okay. We need the screening better defined. We need a letter from the Conservation Commission and from the Board of Health. And, um, you've said there'll be no lighting, no signage as far as the business goes. You are entitled to a twelve-square-foot sign if you choose to put it, but you would need to put it on the site plan.
Okay.
I, I think, you know, you can discuss that with the Building Inspector, but you would want that on your plan.
Okay, yeah, we don't need, I don't, I don't really need a sign.
Okay. And, and again, I know you have eighty-eight acres in back, but we're still just dealing with the three point five. Let me ask my colleagues how they feel about what, what I've said here about what we need. Do you agree, disagree? Do you have questions?
I feel that this really needs to be defined. It's either three and a half acres or it's eighty-eight plus three and a half acres. Because there are a lot of different parameters that, um, get implied. One of them is whether or not Pat and I become a butters if we're gonna start using the eighty-eight acres. I think, and I might be talking out of turn, I would like to hear back from other people. I think the uh, clear-cut solution is to do, um, a sort of, I don't wanna say a land swap, but transfer half an acre from the eighty-eight acres to the three and a half acre lot to make it the four acres. So that he's clearly in the, um, third category for the trucks and the employees. And the reason I'm suggesting that is because I, especially being, um, a neighbor, um, I wouldn't want to be seen as playing favorites. So to have a four-acre lot complies much better with what he's asking for than it, with his three and a half acre lot. Um, I don't know if that makes sense, but that's where I, I'm not comfortable right now with the situation because there's a little bit here and a little bit there and bending the rules. And because of my position, I want it to be clear-cut and definitely falling within the bylaw clearly.
Anyone else like to make a comment or ask a question?
I think with this, um, it's, what we're asking for is nothing that we haven't asked for everyone else in town who wanted a home back, home-based landscaping bus- uh, business, and because of the overlap, I think it's confusing for them, I agree. But again, we've been pretty restrictive on other people that have come forward for the, for home-based contracting and the bylaws have been followed, the site plans and whatnot. And it's been pretty explicit site plans, so we know what we have to.
Jim, do you have any wisdom?
Um, well, I, I think the list of things that we need is pretty solid. Um, I get where Sue is coming from. I don't know that, I mean, that's gonna be a pretty substantial expense to the applicant to, uh, have to go out and have their two lots replotted. Um, just to add a half an acre from, you know, from one lot to, from one plot to the next. Um, I get her, I understand her concern. But it, it seems to me to be, uh, an acceptable requirement at this point.
Hey, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I sort of agree with Jim there. I understand Sue and Pat's perspective, but this is a unique situation with eighty-some-odd acres with an orchard. It seems like unnecessary expense to have them go through all that work to tie to it. I, I could go either way. I think I'm leaning towards, I'm okay with offering the variance. Um, but I understand their concerns.
Well, we can't offer a variance because none was requested, but um, does anyone feel that we need to determine where inside the building certain things will be stored? In other words, there's gonna be a forty-by-eighty building. Does the does there have to be a definition for the square footage that's gonna be used for the, um, business?
I think a simple reminder can just be put in there that only twenty-five percent of that building can be used for for the landscaping side of it, and the rest is, you know, the applicant has stated that the, the other seventy-five percent would be used for agricultural purposes for their apple business. Um, and I think once that's done, then it becomes up to Mr. Hanks to, you know, if he decides to drop in there once every three years on a Saturday morning to see what they're doing, you know, that's up to him. I don't know how he does that, but.
Well, we can only grant this for five years anyway.
Yeah.
So this would come up for review again in five years, so. And then there would be a track record to address. Okay, I would just like to ask the petitioner. Um, you have the option, if you choose to have us toll or, um, continue this hearing till next month. So that you can meet the requirements that we have suggested. It would require you to go and see Leanne and, um, uh, fill out paperwork that allows us to continue the hearing. So that you can update your plot plan. So that you can, um, talk to Conservation, talk to, uh, Board of Health, uh, determine which truck you're going to do. Um, I'm trying to think, was there anything else that we needed? Oh, the, the buffering, you need to put the, the, um, be clear on the site plan. Right now, we don't have any on the plan in essence. So, you know, if we were to vote on it, we would have to vote based on the fact that there isn't any.
Okay. Do, do we go through the process? Oh, sorry about the reverb, um, the process of the putting an ad in the paper and everything for the next meeting?
No.
Okay.
If, if you were to choose to continue it, you can request that of us. We would vote to continue the hearing until our next meeting. And you would, if, that would give you a month to meet all of the, um, suggestions, uh, criticisms that we have made. Uh, it would re- it would require you to sign paperwork with Leanne in the office, in the, uh, Commissioner's office.
Okay.
Is that something you would want to do?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, I'm going to ask Leanne and the minutes to show that the petitioner is requesting a continuance until, when is our next meeting?
June eleventh.
Until June eleventh. And I would put that at seven-thirty because I think we're gonna have a seven o'clocker. Um, no, well, let's put this at seven o'clock. We can change that on the other paperwork, Leanne.
Okay.
We haven't issued it. I just don't want us sitting around for half an hour.
Right.
Have somebody not show up.
Lynn? Are you gonna, do you want any, um, email or letter from the Planning Board on what was discussed about this? Or at least the letter of opinion from them?
They are welcome to send us a letter and give their opinion of what's being done.
Yeah, I, I feel that's important.
It, it, it's perfectly within your right to ask them to send us one, Susanna. Um, tell them that we've continued the hearing until June eleventh. And, um, suggest that their input would be very helpful.
Yes. I have another thing.
Okay, Pat, go ahead.
Just on, just, just for my own edification here, or maybe it could be input on the, um, site plan. I see the building, the, the, the barn they're putting up here, and they're taking down the old house over here, which is da, 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 da. And they're gonna use the same driveway to come up. Now, the eighty foot, is there, are they coming in through there or are they coming up through, along the side? Jerry, you going in the short end or the big, uh, in the big front?
Um, so we will be coming up. Uh, the, well, I don't know what you're looking at, Pat, but, um,
If I've got the, I've got the certified plot plan, so she has the street and then, um, where the old house is to be removed?
Yes, so the driveway is, is, as you look at the, um, it says five hundred plus feet of, of, um, a straight frontage.
Yeah.
Driveway is a little on the left of that five.
Okay, so you're coming in, so we're going around the house and you'd access it?
Straight up, we're going straight up to where the, it says existing house to be removed.
Right.
Straight up there. And then, right now, um, there's a, uh, cooler there that I use for, it's a trailer, a forty-foot trailer. That's, I use for storing apples. That will be gone. So the tr- trucks will come right in. And then they'll pull forward towards where it says three point five acres. The nose of the truck will pull forward there and then they come back in and we can take the equipment off the trailer and put it in the barn. So they'll be.
So you're using the big front, the eight, the long, the big eighty-foot front, right?
Yes. Yes, that is, the eighty is the front of the building. Yes, I'm sorry.
So you, you're accessing it that way, so, um, you're um, like you're hedging or you're, would be on the forty forty-foot side to the road.
On the forty. The gable is on the forty, yes.
So that's looking to the road if it needs any coverage. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So perhaps you should, could show the entrance and exit on the map if you're gonna update it. And my suggestion would, would be if you're going to add things to the existing plot plan that you, um, give it a revision date and, and initial the revision. And send it to us.
Okay.
Okay, do would someone like to make a motion to, um, continue this hearing until seven o'clock on June eleventh at the request of the petitioner?
Don't move.
Would someone like to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Pat.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Um, Jim?
Aye.
Uh, Susanna?
I'm gonna abstain because I just don't want any impropriety at all, so I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Um, and Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we look forward to seeing you on June eleventh at seven o'clock. And I'm hoping that you understand what, um, we're asking you to do, what will be important to us. Again, going to Board of Health and Conservation and just asking them for a letter of their uh, approval or uh, the fact that they are not involved. Uh, identifying the truck or and trailer that's going to be the primary for your, um, work. Um, the uh, perhaps put the storage of where you're gonna put the mulch and topsoil, it's gonna be on that lot. Uh, and your, um, buffering. You know, like whether it's gonna be a, a row of abrevites or whatever it's going to be.
Hey.
And could we also request that we get it a few, I know to add pressure here, we I get it a couple of days ahead of time, the information, so we have a chance to look at it before the meeting.
Absolutely.
Particularly the plot plan. If for some reason you can look out on mytowngovernment.org, the place where you go to get the, um, uh, link to this meeting and see when the Board of Health is meeting and you can see when Conservation is meeting. And you can request of their chairperson to be put on the agenda. And, uh, add, tell them that you need this for a letter for, um, what you're uh, doing as far as a, um, special permit and site plan.
Okay.
Okay, then. We'll see you next month.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Do we have any minutes, Leanne?
Yes, we have minutes of April ninth, um, and Keith and Jenny were absent, so they're not able to vote on that.
So we've got April ninth. Would someone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as drafted for the April ninth meeting.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, um, motion has been made and seconded to accept them as presented. Uh, let's see, who did we say can't?
Um, Keith cannot vote and Jenny cannot vote.
Okay, um, Susanna?
What's matter? Am I voting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes. I'm writing a letter to the Planning Board, um.
Okay.
Oh, yes, yes, I approve.
Jim? And I'm an, and I'm an aye also.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have any warrants, I mean, um, did you manage to get?
Yeah, get, Benny called during the meeting, so it bumped me off of the Zoom, um, so I did speak to him. He's in New Hampshire. He was not able to get on even with the help from a computer guy. But he said he was in favor of everything, um. So to let you know he was in favor of everything.
Okay, Susanna, you're all set with your, you got your, um, voucher processed, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got my money back, thank you.
Okay, just, I didn't want anything hanging out there at the end of the year.
Oh, definitely not, not after that lecture that the Finance Committee gave a year.
Okay, um, any, um, communication?
Um, I, I'm expecting an application to get filed tonight for a variance. Um, I think it's for a garage and I forget the address, but he was planning on filing tonight so that he could get a June hearing.
Okay. Okay, and it's, um, that's gonna be like a s- a dimensional side lot or something, right?
Yes.
Okay, and we also uh have three um Gates Pond Road.
Gates Pond, yeah.
We're waiting to see, they're supposed to be filing something tonight. If they don't, um we'll be going ahead, I assume, with um
I think they were
A variance.
I think they were gonna request um that we um delay the opening of the hearing or postpone, so.
Okay, so if you get that in writing, then we'll
Yeah, that's in the email like that they sent to you, so.
Okay.
Check your
I haven't looked at that. When did they send it?
This afternoon around one o'clock.
Okay.
So check your email.
Well, I was at the doctor's. I'm having some issue with one of my retinas and I had an injection and I'm telling you I'm seeing these blueberries, okay? Uh, okay, well, anyone have anything else? Anyone else have any um communication? If not, um, we have nothing else, do we, Leanne?
Nope.
I'd entertain a motion to um
The truth.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, second by Jim. Any discussion? If not, Pat? Uh, I'm taking that as an I. Susanna?
Hi.
Keith?
Hi.
Uh, Jenny?
Hi.
Okay, we're adjourned.